I'm sorry.
You're following behind here, Gil.
Yes, I am. But you're just so fast.
All right, don't stop.
Efficiency is the word.
That's it, right?
Yep.
Can cancel. All right, you got it? Good. Putting this down, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. Where was that?
Over to the meeting.
A minute.
Let's put him off.
Open the meeting.
I want to put this Hastings Street one.
Take a motion except a minute for three twenty twenty-three is written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a continuation of public hearing for one forty-seven Hartford Avenue East.
Yeah, I can, you know, the last thing on this project is the traffic and our peer engineer issued their memo regarding it. They then responded, our peer engineer then counter responded, but I didn't get it till like three o'clock today. So I gave it to Harry and his engineer, but they didn't have time to respond yet.
Okay.
So he reluctantly really was hoping we could finalize this tonight, but he called me while I was here actually half hour ago and asked and he emailed me asking for a continuance to the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
All right, and hopefully, Mr. Chair, we can resolve all the issues.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for one forty-seven Hartford Avenue East to April twenty-fourth.
Second.
Six P M.
Six P M.
I have a conflict on the twenty-fourth.
You have a conflict on the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
I hate to, uh, I think this one would be all right.
Think so?
You need four votes.
Yeah, we need four votes.
It's nothing controversial here.
None of us are abstaining from it on that particular property, so.
Yeah.
And if I might add, you can continue it now, and if the applicant decides he'd rather wait, he can request continuance for that meeting as well.
Okay. So I need a second and all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'm gonna pass over thirty-five thirty Hastings for a moment. We're gonna move to the public hearing on fifty-five Cape Road, Cape Road. I believe that's gonna be completed also.
Yeah. Ethan Dunbar is the owner of the building and of the existing building. He hired an engineer, I've talked to the engineer, but he's just not getting his site plan done with his drainage for Jeff to look at, so he asked for another continuance.
I, uh, I've had some communication with some people who live in that area. Uh, there's been a little concern. These are generally people I don't hear from. Of what's going on in that operation. I think you need to let them know that we need some clarification of what their use actually is when the town allowed them license to operate. Um, I don't think it it ever came before the planning board for a use permit. So I think that's something we need to look at. And apparently there's some burning or something going on over there.
Um, it looks like that they cleared. If you're looking at the building to the right of the building, along that used to be all wooded pretty much almost to that building.
Yep.
There's nothing you can fit a vehicle down that right side.
Really?
Now, like they did also, maybe they're burning brush. I don't know. I don't know if they went to a per get a permit from the fire department or when.
What did he say? It smelled like rubber. I wouldn't understand why they're burning that, but I mean, it might be nothing, but it's always good to ask.
I'm gonna suggest you only need three votes. This is not a special permit, so if one of you continue this to the twenty-fourth, and even if he wants to continue, I'll have him come in.
Yeah.
And talk to you.
Sounds good. All right, I need a motion to.
Motion to continue the public hearing for fifty-five Cape Road to April twenty-fourth, six P M.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's disposed. All right, we have a continuation of site plan for thirty-six Milford Street.
They, I believe, are online, he's supposed to be. Um, we, um, received the two things. Well, we got Jeff's final review, and I believe there was one item left really from your civil.
Do you have a copy of your review? I looked it over early.
Your civil report. And then the other outstanding item was the elevations, which I think I sent to you, and we're gonna show them on the screen.
I'm hanging on here, Jeff. Any, any issues, Jeff? Or not, any issues?
No issues. They were very thorough in their responses. One thing that is still being addressed and hasn't been fully addressed or hasn't been addressed yet is soil testing at the infiltration basin. Um, the design is not unreasonable whatsoever. The bottom of the basin from which we measured to high groundwater is essentially the existing ground grade. So as long as they've got two foot offset to groundwater and soil below the vegetation that's there, which
But we've said until they.
Until they do the testing. Uh, but it's not like they've got an extremely deep cut, and I'm questioning whether or not they can achieve the offset. They're just gonna show the soils are conducive and that they've got at least two foot depth of water. Otherwise, everything else has been addressed to my satisfaction.
Good. They have to do the elevations, do you say?
No, they're here.
Okay. Oh, there we go.
Well, it's not a continuation then.
No, no.
Okay.
No, no, this one is not continuing.
It says yes, I thought.
Those look much better.
Yes, they do.
I, I agree. I think very good.
Engineer is supposed to be online. I don't know if he is.
He knows six o'clock, right?
Hi, this is, uh, well, Tim Wilkins is on, uh, one of the owners of, of All Purpose Storage.
You wanna walk them through it, Tim?
Um, I, I, I can, I can give it a shout. I thought Dave would be on to do this, so sorry. I botched it. Dave's on. It's like dumb botching for us.
I thought we were like fifth on the agenda. I was just logging in.
You were. We're, uh, we're moving quick tonight.
Okay. Yeah, so basically, um, what we did, we pulled together some renderings. You guys mentioned last time we had the metal. Um, so looked at some, a combination of, you know, some, some stone and some clavert. But I think you look at the renderings, you know, much better look. It has the peak. Um, you know, great view corridor from the road with the, the mix of, um, uh, the landscaping. And it really gives a good idea of what, you know, a lot, we have some questions before what the lighting was like, and you can see the lighting, you know, just very low level right above the doors. Um, and it's coming down on the building versus going out. So, um, I think pretty straightforward, and hopefully this is, uh, more in line with what uh, the anticipation was.
Yeah, is that great road? Is that the, um, right away to the rear?
That, that's going back out to the, um, solar. Yep.
Yep. All right. Yeah, that is a lot more, uh, like what we were looking for, so.
Is that a, is that a peaked roof all the way through, right? It's not just a peak gable on the end, right?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think that other, I think the other rendering was just a little bit off. I think it's a, uh, peak roof like this.
Look like that, okay. Three, three twelve, uh, peak pitch, pitch on that. Three twelve or four twelve.
Is that the actual landscaping that's gonna be installed?
Yeah, we'd sent them over a plan, um, with a mix of trees and bushes. And it's, uh, hopefully, it's hard to tell, but there is, um, we talked about it, but there's an elevation too, so you know, the eye level of, of the cars will still be lower too, so it's gonna be even further screened.
Oh, that's good. Yeah, I like it. It's really good.
So I think those were a couple of the things that we left off with last time were the, the elevations and the lighting. So I think we were able to appropriately, um, get those. And then we had the Graves letter that we had just gotten, but we replied to that and put in all the responses and satisfactorily, uh, addressed all the comments. I think the only pending ones were the elevations, which came in after his letter. And then the final one is just, um, he's good with the stormwater design. We just need to confirm, uh, the seasonal high water table, which, uh, Tim has a geotech on board and will have that. So we're just asking that that be a condition of the approval that, you know, that's something that we would need prior to a building permit. But I think we're looking four weeks out for, just to wrap up that soils report.
You comfortable with that, Jeff?
In this case, I am comfortable with it because of the depth of the bottom of the basin being essentially on existing ground grade. So it's gonna be pretty reasonably easy to have at least a two foot offset to groundwater and suitable soils for the first two or more feet below the ground surface.
Anybody have any questions regarding it?
I'm sorry.
The landscaping is gonna be the way it says. I think that's gonna.
In my opinion, yes.
Any questions? Just write the decision, make sure it includes the conditions that.
They'll be prior to the issuance of a building permit.
What does the actual landscaping plan show?
Uh, I can, yeah, I got that up if you want to. It's, um, can I just share my screen? You can see it is pretty, um, robust on the. Yeah.
Good.
So that you can see the, the quantities, you know, match what was shown there. It's a mix of trees and bushes, but we really did, uh, you know, that was one of the early focuses. We'd always heard that the, the screening was important here. So now I think, like I said, between the combination of the, the berm going up, the trees and then the new facade for the buildings, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good improvement over what we had before.
Absolutely. I think, I think they got the message. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
No, we appreciate you, uh, working with us and taking care of that, especially the outside of the building. Uh, those are really good for storage units.
David, one question for you. What you're planning? Pretty high salt content from the, from the road there to make sure that you have stuff that's gonna endure the salt.
Oh, for the landscaping?
Oh, for the landscaping.
Well, you might be back quite a bit.
Yeah, and we'll be up there. We'll be back. The, um, this is the edge of road here. Uh, so I think we got a good twenty feet before we get to our our plantings.
No, you'll be fine.
Got it right away there anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put up, point out that the landscaping is much higher in elevation than the street.
Higher than.
So there won't be direct runoff, salt laden runoff from the street. It's just whatever gets cast from the snowplows. If it can even get cast that far.
That higher that far.
Yep.
Right, we're a good five to ten feet.
I'm almost doing like sixty down, even pushing snow. All right. If we're satisfied, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Nothing from the audience?
To accept.
What's that? Nothing from the audience? I already asked. Okay.
Make a motion to accept plan from thirty-six Milford Street as presented.
With, with the normal conditions plus the one regarding Graves' memo.
Yep, the normal conditions.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's not.
Aye.
So Dave and Tim, I'll, um, I'll draft up the decision, the chair will sign it, then the twenty day appeal period will start when it gets to the clerk.
Great, and then, um, I guess the next step is I, it submitted the A and R for review, and that's something that I guess we could just handle at the next.
Yeah, I'll handle that on the twenty-fourth.
Perfect.
Be within the appeal period. There has to be an, uh, A and R so that the town can separate it. The Board of Selectmen have already given them permission to submit an A R. I'll have that for you on the twenty-fourth.
Sounds good.
And then everything can go to the selectmen in May, and they can do their financial transfer.
All right.
Thank you.
Close the public.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to close, I need a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for thirty-six Milford Street.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we will continue the site plan for um, twenty-three Cape Road, actually, that's a special permit also.
I can just give you an update that, um, the acoustic response from their engineer came in, I shared it with you, and I gave it to our consultant who subsequently sent us a letter saying he was satisfied that they've, uh, passed a new threshold, the under states threshold with sound mitigation.
Um, okay, I did, uh, review that report. And, uh, seemed pretty confident that, uh, the applicant pretty much covered all the ground regarding that and, uh,
And, and one last thing.
If the rest of the board had an opportunity to review it.
I reviewed it. I looked at it.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is that your engineer had submitted a response to Graves', um, the first memo. And I know Jeff is here to talk about that. Uh, he hasn't written anything yet.
Give a copy of them.
I, I don't have Graves', oh, Graves' memo is in there, yep. That's where we're at. And I know.
We have any other peer reviews that are open?
What's that?
Any other peer reviews still open?
Yes, traffic.
Traffic is.
Uh, where we're at with traffic is we're waiting on their response. I know that they've met with Mass D O T. I know that they're working on trying to get the intersection of Cape and Hartford East straightened out to not only accommodate their facilities, but the one in Hopeville. It didn't seem to get accommodated at that intersection. Is that about right, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, uh, just sir, for, uh, overview for the board and for the community. Um, Jack and I sat in on a conversation with the Mass D O T. Uh, Mass D O T, um, and also was the, the engineer, uh, traffic engineer for both the Hopeville project and the Mendon project are, um, kind of one in the same. Um, now their project is much greater than impact than our project. There's a, their building's five times the size of what we're building here. Um, they, uh, so he's they didn't really address that intersection, which kind of surprised me. So I, Jack will tell you, I kind of pushed both the team and them to get involved and address, um, because I know they want to put a traffic light at the end of Plain Street, and, you know, some of that's Mendon territory, so um, they're gonna have to in some way play nice for that to happen. So what we're trying to do is get them to work together to, and I know there's been discussion of buying, uh, the old Skinner property to be able to widen that. And they can correct me if I'm wrong, but they've, uh, been, I think, been attempting to purchase that property to, I don't know whether that's happened or not, but they can fill us in in a minute. But that's the last outstanding thing on that, uh, you know, the, uh, it's, uh, and I'll let them take it away with it, how they've addressed the traffic.
Well, so there's traffic still in, in Jeff's final comments, Ken.
So you're on.
All right, um, good evening for the record, Connor Downey from the Applicad Blue Order Property Group. Um, Jack gave you kind of an overview of where we stand as far as, uh, sound is concerned. Our engineer, Ben Mueller, is on the line as well, if you should have any questions uh, regarding that topic. Uh, and then Kevin Demers from Dupree Engineering is gonna give just an overview on, uh, the outstanding civil engineering items. We are still making progress on the traffic front, don't have anything, um, to report yet, but we are making progress as it relates to, uh, the intersection and everything we discussed on the call with D O T. Um, hoping to cover that in the next planning board meeting. Just wanted to focus on, uh, hopefully, um, covering and finalizing civil engineering and acoustics tonight, but we are continuing to make progress on the traffic front as well.
Good. Good. Um, I'll leave it to Jeff. Jeff, where are we at with this?
Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, Jeff Walsh, the Graves Engineering peer reviewer for the planning board. Um, our last review letter was dated January thirtieth of this year. Uh, that was our follow-up review letter, um, looking at the responses and design revisions with respect to civil engineering. And at that time, there were two, um, what I feel to be more of a housekeeping issues that I want to point out to the board. Um, otherwise, we were satisfied with the civil engineering, um, as it was presented to the board. The two outstanding points I'd like to, to make is number fourteen. Um, construction details for some of the drainage and other, um, um, infrastructure that's gonna be put into the, um, into the project. Um, normally, we see construction details on a set of plans so that the contractor's working um, does not have to refer to somebody else's details such as Mass D O T. It's more of a drafting thing to just bring them in and put them on the plans. Um, that comment still needs to be addressed. I don't feel it's, it's, um, it should be left to the, the, uh, contractor has to go find a Mass D O T, set a, um, construction details and look at them, because any construct, any contractor who's familiar with Mass D O T, certainly not an issue. For any contractors who are not familiar with Mass D O T, it gets to be a pain. Um, and then lastly, number twenty-three, again, it's a construction detail. This is for a drain manhole that serves as a diversion structure. It's clearly called out on the plans as such, but the, with a diversion structure, um, there's internal workings, whether it's a, a wall that backs up water to a certain elevation or a wall that has one or more orifices in it. Um, that level of detail, that basically the interior workings of that manhole needs to be included in a special detail itself. Other than that, I'm, I was satisfied with the engineering, um, that was presented to us. The plans that we reviewed at that time were last revised January fifth. Um, beyond that, late last week, I received what are, what I feel are exhibits um, that the applicant and the design engineer are looking to present to the board. Uh, these are visuals in response to, um, discussion we had at the last meeting I was at with respect to things such as headlight projection for vehicles coming around the building. Um, turning the building a hundred eighty degrees and having the passenger vehicle parking more to the west and the truck maneuvering area to the east or at the entrance, you know, coming down the, uh, the driveway off of Cape, Cape Road. Um, those aren't engineering plans. They are exhibits, concepts, visuals, if you will, to present to the board. So I didn't feel I should be providing engineering comments on those. I, knowing that the applicant and his team will be using those to, I assume, discuss with the board tonight. Follow up to the last meeting I was at with respect to those different things. Headlight projections, reload, re, reconfiguring the site and so on and so forth. So that's why you don't have anything in writing from me on the latest information I saw.
Well, Connor, I will let you take it from here.
Yeah, sure, so, um, uh, I'll, I'll actually pass it over to Kevin from Dupree, who's there in person, uh, to go through the exhibits. I'll share them on screen, but they were all of the follow-ups. Just mentioned, uh, and I can just outline them real quickly before we get into the, the actual plans. But first of which was a, a, a plan showing any disturbances of the tree line. There was some discussion about whether or not there'd be additional tree clearing. Uh, to clarify, there will be no tree clearing as part of our development, only some branch trimming at the property lines. So we'll show you that. Um, second of which was a site plan showing the actual distances from the surrounding residents to the sound wall into the building. Uh, third of which, as, as just mentioned, was the analysis on the truck headlights coming around the building. Um, fourth was, uh, an analysis on potentially rotating the building ninety or a hundred and eighty degrees. Uh, and then fifth was just a couple of clarifications regarding the, the lighting plans, both the wall packs on the building and the height of the poles in the, um, in the parking lot. So I'll share the, uh, those sets of plans, and I'll have Kevin just kind of give a brief synopsis of each, and then happy to answer any, uh, follow-up questions as well. Thanks.
Address Connor right away, is it? Uh, I, I think we're gonna make it, and this is if the board agrees, I think we should make a condition that it's well posted that there'll be no idling.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep, that's standard for these types.
Yeah, exactly. I was aware of that. I just wanted to make sure that it got mentioned here. And, uh, it does get posted, so we'll make that a condition of it. Uh, other than that, um, why don't you show us the additional renderings? And let's take us looking, and you can tell us whether it fits or it doesn't.
All righty.
I, uh, yeah, I can, I can take this, Connor. Um, uh, Kevin Demers from Dupree Engineering, uh, we prepared these, uh, these following exhibits. The, the first was the, um, you know, was the clearing exhibit. Uh, there was some discussion, uh, limited disturbance, uh, shown going in, into the existing tree line. Uh, upon going out there for the site walk, uh, you know, with the Conservation Commission in late January, we had, uh, we had observed in the field that these are not, um, these are not low trees that will be cleared, uh, they're on the edges where grading will occur. And the canopy is very high at these locations, so, uh, so we concluded there, there's no actual tree clearing necessary. It's simply that we'll have, uh, we'll have some grading activities, uh, beneath this, this canopy. I guess the next. Uh, this, this figure shows the, uh, shows the offset distances from the, uh, abutting homes to the various, uh, various objects associated with the development. Uh, you'll notice the, the sound wall is, uh, varies from approximately, uh, four hundred and thirty-eight feet uh, from, from the nearest home to, uh, four hundred and eighty-five feet from the nearest abutting home. And you'll notice the buildings are approximately, uh, five hundred and seventy-five to five hundred and eighty-one feet uh, from, from the nearest, uh, nearest abutting homes. Uh, also, a few extra distances were given for, uh, sound, for the sound wall, approximately seventy feet from the, uh, from the delineate wetlands at the closest approach. And approximately two hundred and nineteen feet from the center line of stream at, at that's closest approach. As far as the, uh, we did headlight, um, you know, headlight profiles for, uh, A, B, and C just to see what the, uh, what the worst case was for each of the, uh, each of the nearest abutting homes uh, that may, uh, maybe in the direction of the truck headlights. Uh, the first profile shows, uh, shows that the, the, uh, the beams are, are shielded by the building itself and will essentially shine over the home. This, this won't affect the, um, affect the visibility of the headlights on, uh, on the home directly behind the, uh, correct, coming in via, um, you know, via the existing, uh, existing driveway from Cape Road. That approach, those headlights will be blocked by the building. Um, if you are, if you're going back towards the, uh, towards the existing home directly, uh, west of our site. Uh, alignment B shows the, uh, shows the lights, the beams will, the, uh, the nearest existing home is actually higher than our proposed site. And therefore, when turning in the corner, the beams will shine into the, uh, into the hill below the home. Um, there is existing foliage, but even assuming there, uh, even assuming there is no growth on the trees, the beams will shine into that, uh, into that hill, um, and not shine into the, uh, into the abutting home. And for profile C, which is the south, uh, south drive, the beams will shine, uh, will essentially be blocked by the, uh, by the existing sound barrier, uh, which will be approximately fifteen feet high. The beams will, the nearest visibility of headlights will shine over, uh, over this existing home, and the beams themselves will, uh, will shine into the, into the sound wall itself as, as the truck is turning to approach uh, along the southern driveway, uh, going south of the building.
Just to, just to clarify, Kevin, it's proposed sound wall, not existing.
Proposed, yes, correct.
And it's twelve, twelve feet high, which is depicted here.
Yes.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that, um, the sound wall on this exhibit has been extended since the plans I saw in, uh, late January.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it, it looks like they've extended them. I don't remember them coming around four.
Yeah. Yes, we did extend it. I think it was. Yes, we did extend it. I think it was Ben can weigh in, our acoustic engineer, but I believe it was about a hundred feet extra. Just to wrap this corner, there was some discussion about homes, uh, further to the south, I guess. So we did go ahead and I think we have presented or, or, uh, provided the revised plan set. Correct, Kevin?
I, I believe they're provide to the conservation commission. I don't recall if they were provide to the, uh, to the planner or not.
Okay. If, if not, they will be, and, and this will be part of the final plant set, the additional extension of that wall.
You see it's a renderings of turning the building?
We, we do, uh, we have two of which rotating a full 180 and a full 90. I'll let Kevin go into it and the engineering challenges thereof.
The, uh, we looked at the, uh, 90 degree and 180 degree rotations of the building. Uh, we had actually looked at these, these options, you know, earlier on the process, uh, earlier last year, uh, just when doing a feasibility of the site. The, uh, rotating the, rotating the building, based on the, the challenges with the existing slope, uh, we run into needing to raise the building by approximately, uh, approximately 15 feet, 15 to 20 feet raise in the building. And that increases the fill, uh, by approximately three to four times. Depend, depending on which, uh, which option we run with. So it, it essentially for the, uh, for flipping, you know, flipping the truck loading to the east of the building as opposed to the west, we wind up with a, an edge of pavement going from, uh, elevation 230, uh, approximately elevation 236 to elevation 255 in order to make the front loading work is that obviously if you flip the trucks, uh, loading in, that has to be four feet lower than, than the finished floor elevation. So, so you have to, as a result, raise the whole, uh, the whole building up in order to make that work and the, uh, in the office entrances work on the, on the rear side. Uh, so that was a challenge with the, uh, with the 180 degree rotation. Um, and similar with the 90 degree rotation, you can see the building goes significantly east, eastward on the site, which puts it right into that, right into that hill where we have groundwater challenges. Uh, we need to raise the building. So similarly it would, you know, the, the elevation of that edge of pavement, uh, closest to the, to the resource, close to the butters would be picked up by approximately 15 feet. Uh, in this case with a similar, uh, similar requirement of, I believe it was roughly 300, uh, 300,000 cubic yards of fill as opposed to the, uh, to being well below 100,000 cubic yards currently. So resulting significantly more fill operations, truck loads coming through. It'll be quite a disruption during, during construction as well as, you know.
How many guys a load? Yeah. How many, uh, oh, I don't have my coke.
So construction period as well as, as cost is, is very prohibitive in, in these cases. Um, and the, the final, uh, final exhibit we provided was a, uh, a photometric view of the lights. You know, for visibility sake, uh, as, you know, as, um, as presented previously, we propose, uh, we propose, you know, zero, um, you know, zero foot candles at, uh, at the property line and the surrounding, uh, resources, the wetlands. Um, you know, they're, these, these light poles will be approximately 20 feet high. So again, they will be, they can be visible in the surrounding area, but there's no, uh, no light will be shining, uh, direct from these. They'll be down lighting. So again, that's, uh, that's just another, another quick view of the isometrics of the lighting, uh, 20 feet.
Location, this location opposed.
Jeff, did you look at this?
I did, I did. I reviewed the exhibits, uh, Friday afternoon and, and, uh,
Lighting?
Including the lighting, yes, yes.
Comfortable.
I'm comfortable with it.
Is it soft enough that it's not going to create a soccer field problems?
The, the, uh, the, yeah, it's sock fields and, and the lighting that goes on with any kind of athletic field is a lot different than this.
The back of the building, towards the houses or just towards the front?
Correct. There'll be, um, there'll be wall packs along the building, um, one line of lights behind the building. And, um, and majority of the lighting will be in the front parking area.
Mr. Chairman, uh, 20 foot pole is not unreasonable. I'm comfortable with that. I wouldn't expect anything lower. And I don't feel there's a need for anything taller.
Any questions, gentlemen? Anybody in the, many questions? Why don't we start here? She had hers up first.
Maria F, 14 Edward Road. Um, so you're saying that turning the building 180 does, if you say that.
Yeah, it sounds like, sounds like we're going to add about, uh, yeah, 15,000 truckloads. I, I don't think that's a viable option.
Okay, just one more follow-up question. In the sound wall that wraps around the building a little bit.
Yeah.
Can that be extended? So the people on Edward Road don't get any of the sound either?
How far is Edward Road from there?
It's.
You want, did you just extend that? Sorry. Did you just extend that wall around the corner to do to?
We extended it around the corner based on some of the commentary at the last meeting. We didn't extend it all the way up to the top of the downslope of where the trucks would be driving through. But yeah, another hundred feet we extended are already.
This is Ben Muller. Uh, can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
Sorry, uh, uh, cause I, I had problems before. Um, so the purpose of that was to fully shield any of the dock activity, which is our, the, you know, the, the major noise source comes from there. The, the only thing that would be present would be the truck traversing that southern road. And we looked at all those elements that were part of the cer- sound study that was reviewed by the peer reviewer.
Yeah, and our peer reviewer did look at that and felt that he was comfortable with it.
He did.
Yes.
There's no woods there now because there's some solar.
I think it's a distance.
This sound will just come.
Maybe I think you're over.
Any chance of bringing up an aerial line that?
What's that?
Any chance of bringing up an aerial view with that?
Can you bring up a view of that with the sound barriers?
Just show the site, show, show the.
Yeah, sure. Let me bring it up real quick. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So this area where my white hand mouse is, is where the proposed building will be. The approximate sound wall will come from approximately here, wrap around the truck court here to approximately here. This is our property line right here where you can see the difference between where the solar ends, this tree line basically. To give a distance as measured by Google Earth, you are approximately 625 feet to residences along Edward Road Circle.
Thank you.
Can you bring up the plan to show the, um, the site plan itself where you're showing the wall? Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. Can you see that plan? I can zoom in a little bit. Oh, sorry, here. This right here, you could see the kind of terminus of the sound wall. It's this boxed out figure right here.
Yeah.
So it wraps around to probably 20 to 40 feet past where the building end is.
Basically it's just, uh, uh, sound is just from the, um,
driveway.
From the driveway.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the sounding engineer was fine with it, then I mean, it's something we're not. I mean, I, I can't have them wrap the building in bubble wrap for everyone.
I'm just thinking that when a truck is full and it's pulling out and it's going, and I think the traffic pattern is that it comes, when they come down, they go to the right and then as they leave, are they coming up the other side on the south side?
We set a, set a condition.
And they'll have to go up the hill and that would make a lot of noise.
Well, we can set a condition and make them come in on the left side and go out on the right, the right.
Oh, it could be another thing is it could be empty. They're dropping, the big trucks are probably dropping things off here. Or whatever, you know what I mean? So.
It depends, it depends as well. Just chime in if this is a multi-tenant building and both tenants secure their truck courts. It could, could be, you know, a combination of both. So not knowing the tenant or tenants yet and how they'll operate, we can't say for certain which way their traffic flows will go.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
We could ask our acoustic engineer to respond to that concern.
Sure.
I'm sure he'll write a paragraph or come to your meeting. He couldn't come tonight. He had a, a family issue.
All right.
Yeah, if he could, if he could, his thoughts on that would be good.
Okay.
So fact that in the site sounding mission study, Bethany is not even a site. Or in a butter, but there's a site one, site two and site three. Well, there was no psych, sound study done for a school that's actively. That's page three of the site sounding mission.
Yeah, I'm not. It's hard for me to determine if that's relevant. We'll have to ask the sound engineer that. I mean, you guys, you guys create as much noise as the other items around you. Uh, obviously being a school, um, you know, and I mean, I, it's, we're not going to be able to protect the entire environment. You know, it's, but we can run it past the sound engineer.
I can tell you.
I just want to get clarity about what you were saying back to me is that our school will make as much noise as.
Could, I mean, I, I.
Four trucks an hour.
I've got to ask, uh, I've got to ask the sound engineer that question.
Well, they didn't do a study. So on our.
So let's find that out, why they didn't, or maybe.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, uh, maybe this is something that Ben, our acoustics engineer can respond to. All of the surrounding areas were taken into account. Yeah, um, he's on, he should be on screen.
Not our guy, that's fair guy.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm behalf of the applicant, but, uh, we, we did fully include the school in the study. And, and I know you're, you were, um, pointing out in the report how we chose three locations to survey the ambient. Uh, but despite the specific location of it, the, the results from that location are, go far beyond just the specific point that were measured. So location three typifies all of, of the active roadway corridor of which the school is included. Uh, and so the school actually was the, uh, least sensitive of all receptors looked at because it's only occupied during the daytime hours when other ambient, uh, and, and road noise are already at, at height. Um, the, the primary focus of the study was on the residences during the nighttime hours when there could be some intermittent activity from the site. So the school was indeed included. Uh, it wasn't the most sensitive, so it didn't get the lion's share of our report. Um, but, but it was, it's all taken care of in there.
And this was, uh, and this was the take from our, also from our, uh, the town representative peer reviewer.
Agreed, yes.
I, I can tell you when we, uh, kicked off the scope with, um, our sound engineer, Chris, was very diligent about ambient and measuring ambient, uh, sound and made them go back out and do it again and again. So I don't, I can't answer her question directly and Chris would have to answer that, but that's at least what we did. I think it's best, since we had a couple of questions, why don't I make sure Chris is at the next meeting?
Let's make sure we address that question.
Yeah.
Oh, actually she's been waiting. Sorry.
From the lot lines, we're, um, a non-residential district, but it's a residential district.
How far we, uh, the, uh,
Supposed to be, supposed to be 200 feet, right? Is the minimum where.
From the residential dwell.
Yes. We are a minimum of, there with me one second, 438 feet.
And, uh, from the lot line?
From the residence.
Supposed to be 100 feet from the lot line?
100 feet from the lot line?
All right, give me the, uh, zoning.
We're well greater than 100 feet away from lot line. If that's the.
It appears we're greater than that, but I can, uh, I can do a quick measurement.
If you're measuring, could you share it on the screens? So they can see it?
Uh, I'm not.
We gotta be 200 feet from the river, so.
Gives it some context.
Give me one second, guys.
I get that email.
Part of me. Oh, okay.
Robinson Road.
Yep. You, uh, determine?
Just about. Oh, we show it on sheet, um, sheet five of our, uh, site plans gives a, gives a distance on the, the top, uh, the northern corner, which is closest to the property line. This is the closest was, uh, 330.7 feet.
The property line?
Correct. From, from the, uh, from the property line, uh, to the, uh, to the northwest corner of the building. Yes, correct.
So those are the setbacks in.
Yeah.
Over 100 to the building from all of them?
So yeah, if you go to the northwest corner, um, that's, that's the closest approach. So top left. Uh, so if you see that, that measurement to the left, uh, so that's our 330.7 feet. That's, that's the, uh, the residential zone property is, is in, to the west.
South isn't residential.
No, those are commercials. They don't apply. So we're 300 feet away. Yeah. They don't, that's all commercial.
Yeah, the, the existing and proposed drainage would be, uh, would be further, obviously closer than the, than the building itself.
Yeah, I think the setback refers to, I, I haven't had a chance to read through the entire thing. But I think the, uh, the, the further setback from, um, there's either to the, uh, where there's no vegetation, which would be like a parking lot or, or the building. And those look, all look further. If I, I may be wrong, but they all look further than 100 feet.
Mr. Chairman, the violation reads for no other purpose other than, uh, screening of vegetation.
How far is that, uh, drainage? Is that existing drainage or? Is that existing drainage, or?
Yes, there's an existing drainage, which we, we will propose to reuse the area for a, uh, for energy dissipation, for, uh, for riprap outlet. Uh, but there is existing drainage that is, uh, that is at the limit disturbance as proposed.
I may have to get a ruling from council on that. We'll ask council to verify, but it seems to me if it's existing draining, that may that may be a different issue. We'll have to deal with it. How, uh, without that, that drainage, uh, how far away?
So it'd be, uh, so just for, for reference, the triangular piece of, uh, of land where we were proposing a reinforced slope, uh, just, just to the right of the start of riprap, that's approximately 150 feet from the, from the residential property line. So if, if you go further in from the wall to the left, there's a, a corner made by the, uh, by the, those triangles. Um, that would, that would be 150 feet from, from the residential property line.
So what's the question here? Is the drainage? Um, and I'll have to defer to council on that, whether that's, uh.
Well, we, 150, 50 feet from the, from the closest point or the furthest point?
The, the closest point to our, to our grading, the rest is for the drainage outfall. Anything, anything within 150 feet of that property line is for the drainage.
Putting riprap in you?
Correct, yes.
To, to elaborate slightly, we are also in front of the CONCOM, which is one of the items we wanted to cover with you partially tonight, but we discussed this at the last meeting, the riprap is to further slow down discharge, stormwater discharge before hitting the wetland. And the CONCOM, uh, said that they were okay with it because it's improving the current situation.
Yeah, that's, that is, I'll want to.
Unfortunately or unfortunately, that's neither here nor there.
Yeah, understood.
We, um, I can ask, uh, council.
Yeah, please ask, I, I mean, I, I.
I want to read that too.
I think, yeah, and I think that, and I've got to too, I just don't have time to do it right this second, but it's, if it's I know council's gonna say it's improving the drainage situation that we currently have. They're, they're gonna say that that's not, that it's not gonna fall into the guidance of the Bible. Um, but I'll let her answer that question. That's her job.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
Bring back to the sound study. Um, since it's, it's modeling, is there any way that the town can stay positioned to where once the tenant is in place and they start operations, that perhaps another sound test is done? Maybe that's done every couple of years?
All right. We, if, if this is a problem, we plan on doing something similar with traffic, we can certainly.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do it with acoustic as well.
Can I go ahead, please?
If, if I may, we've, we've volunteered to do that in similar projects in the past. We're happy to do a post occupancy sound monitoring to prove out what we're proposing and ultimately having to live by here.
Okay. Yeah, and, and we've done that before as a board also, and we've addressed issues that have arisen after construction. Um, so it's not, you know, out of the realm that if things don't, if they respond as they, they appear on paper, then then we take some type of action to improve it.
Our boss, Big Street, uh, one more on the sound study. Because the, uh, sound wall, they send all over the south, I'd be interested in hearing from the sound engineer as to what sort of consideration or modeling was done to represent any reflection of the sound off the south side wall of the building, thus amplifying it, but, you know, so, so east facing residents.
Yeah, I'm sure when we have him here at the next, uh, meeting.
Get it on.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make sure he's prepared for whatever.
I'm sure he did. I mean, I, I would find that I'd believe sound engineer wouldn't, but we'll have, we'll ask him the question when he's here.
Yeah, but he ended up giving it to.
I think we have a hand up here, oh. Bruce, yes, Bruce.
You have to unmute him.
Yep, I, this is Bruce Howard, 5 Joseph Road. A number of, um, meetings ago, uh, I raised a question about noise, uh, coming from construction, and the answer was, it's only temporary. Um, well, what I don't understand is, um, you know, we're, we're having a, we're having a lot of discussion about noise right now. Uh, I think we need some, um, temporary noise barriers in place if there is construction, uh, and there was also a lot of concern that, uh, um, uh, if the applicant rotated their building, uh, all the fill that would have to come in. And all the, uh, noise of the extra trucks bringing the fill in. So why not shrink your building? It's, and, um, which the planning board is allowed to, um, do that and request that they shrink their building. Uh, that will reduce their cost of fill, will reduce the, uh, number of trucks come in, and you can, uh, potentially, uh, wrap your sound wall, uh, longer on the south side, uh, protecting Edward Road. So why can't that be considered?
It can be considered, certainly. Um, the applicant would have to want to do that, number one. I mean, we can ask, but they don't have to say yes. Um, it, uh, if the, and as far as construction noise, I mean, no matter what ends up being built there eventually, whether it's a warehouse, uh, housing project or, because I'll, I'll tell you, that's one concern I sit here for a planning board chair. My concern is that's gonna end up being a 40B project. Um, sometimes, you know, we have to look out for the town, and what could be worse? And I'm telling you right now, Mendon is at a 1.7% affordable housing. We are outside the safe harbor, which makes us prime to end up having an affordable project here, is we are likely candidate for. Um, so I'm trying to protect the town of Mendon when I look at other options for what can be built on some of these properties. I would like to fill them all up so we never get a 40B project here. Be honest with you, because it's gonna affect our school systems and, and traffic is gonna be, uh, much worse. You're worried about the traffic from this, put a 40B project in there, see how many trips a day come out of there. So, not everything's a, a clear and easy picture for any board that sits before you in town. Um, when we make decisions, we make, number one, Mendon needs tax revenue, we look at that as a whole, the town as a whole. Uh, and I have to be concerned with what could end up there. And, you know, so, um, we try to balance all that. Now, whether this, uh, this project ends up getting approved or not, um, you know what, we have to take each one as they come, and we have to listen to everything. And we tend to do that, and, you know, when the engineers, uh, hopefully we can get the sound engineer and the traffic model done, we'll have more information to work with. But, now, I can't sit here, uh, Bruce, and guess, um, uh, and guess, uh, you know, what those answers are gonna be for, and I'm not a, a sound engineer, so.
I just wanted to know if you were expressing a personal opinion or, uh, the town opinion, uh, regarding the 40B or any other type of project.
I'm expressing a, a town opinion. I mean, I just, we're in the midst of finishing a master plan for the community. Um, I would think that, that that most towns like Mendon are very restrictive to a 40B, but if a 40B comes, if we, we've already had a couple, um, Mendon loses control of zoning. I mean, that's, that's just a fact. When the state, uh, when a 40B comes in, comprehensive permit, it doesn't even come before planning. It goes in front of ZBA, okay? Uh, that's how the state likes to handle it, because through the ZBA, they can push it through, and which is little the tenant can do. So, that's my concern.
Pretty effective for 14 Edwards. So you're saying that 18 wheeler trucks are better than families?
I'm not saying anything, I'm just, I'm saying what would, uh, if we're judging with impacts to school systems and, and everything, I'm not saying about the noise. There's a lot more impact from a 40B project than just the noise. I mean, there's 25% affordable units. Um, there's, there's, uh, you know, one of these could possibly end up a 200-unit, uh, apartment building. And how many kids does that produce for the school system? Yes.
Derek Curse, 152 yard for that meeting. Further to your comments about the 40B plan. How would the town, the public, which controls the water flow, the whole next area of East Grove and Heart of the East, impact the state's allowance of the large residential community to be played in?
I think there's enough area down there to, to put, uh, um, existing well, you know, put a regular well, um, and I think there's a, I think there was a well.
We're getting off the subject here.
Yeah. Bottom line is, I, I just don't want you to think we're trying to ramrod this thing through, and, you know, the planning board is looking out for a lot of other things, not just this particular project.
What it's on for.
What it's on, yeah, exactly, what it's on. Yes.
I'm a caution pastor, Bethany Church and Bethany Christian Academy. Uh, I don't really have a question, I just want to express my sentiments before, but we leave. I'm really disappointed that there's no sound mitigation considered for Bethany Christian Academy. The teachers are gonna be teaching their classes every day, and we're actually much closer than Mobaco that was included in the sound study, and we're not considered at all. And I'm, I'm just deeply disappointed, and I'd like to.
But we can address that.
I actually like to reconsider some sound mitigation of a wall of some sort between us, them, and our, our facility, okay?
Sure, certain.
Thank you.
I would, I would like you to attend the next meeting when the sound engineer is here. Our representative, not their representative sound engineer, our representative sound engineer. I, I'm not sure everybody realizes, but Mendon, uh, asked the applicant to utilize after their, all their engineering was done. Um, and we're one of the only planning boards ever to do it. Uh, we have a set of engineers on each facet, fiscal, traffic, sound, um, civil, uh, we've hired our own to do a peer review on their engineers. Um, so these people aren't representing them, they're representing us. There any other questions?
On the computer?
No hands?
Stand.
It's good.
So let's just, if we can, let's review what we need for the next meeting to make sure.
We need the sound engineer here.
Yeah.
For him.
You need a sound engineer.
Uh, and I know what to ask him.
Okay.
Uh, we need a legal opinion on the setback.
Yep.
On the drainage, um, amongst other things, perhaps. Uh, they're the two big ones, and maybe we'll have a response on traffic by then, I don't know. That's up to them.
Thank you.
It's sound, uh.
You, they heard that.
I can hear it.
Apologies, um, yes, that, that sounds accurate to me. I've got a couple of follow-ups here. Um, the one other item, uh, if I may, um, and maybe Damon can, can add a little bit of color to this, we are also in front of the CONCOM, as I mentioned, for our NOI. Um, and I think they were looking, um, for a recommendation from you at whatever point you're comfortable saying that the plans are not gonna change significantly um, in order to issue their order of conditions, not saying that's tonight, but I just wanted to get that on, on your radar as well.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think we're, as, as a conservation, we're looking to, but now that we have this situation with the, the bylaw, with that drainage.
Yep.
Maybe we should just wait for the town council to give us a little bit of, uh, you know, input before, just in case something has to be moved.
And it's good practice to have planning board go first and.
Oh, no, 100%, we weren't, not, they weren't looking to approve, they just wanted to see where we were at.
Any other questions?
I just couldn't say, I think we can, unless the applicant doesn't want to, you can go to the 24th. Or the first one in May, I don't know. Oh, except that Barry won't be here.
That's up to. Can you, like, can we move this to the, uh, first week in May?
Uh, sure. What's the date?
May 1st.
May 1st.
May 1st?
Yeah, something for us by then?
Yes, we will. We'll, at the very least, have follow-ups to all of these items tonight, and I'm, I'm hoping that should give us enough time on the traffic front as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make a motion, continue the public carrying for 23 Cape Road to May 4th, 6 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Um, so. Yeah. We have a.
Vice chairman has a.
We have a situation where there's, and it was an extension for Robinson Road that has been, um, I don't know, does anybody know if Fred, if Fred's not, eh, not, not healthy?
I haven't seen him.
Yeah.
Is he, if anybody know that Fred is out on a health reason, for health reasons?
Fred, lab him?
Yeah.
I haven't seen him locally in a while.
I've been told, uh, by another source that he, it's been incapacitated a little bit. I don't know how much, I don't know what.
What I'm getting at is the, his.
People can't get a hold of him and shouldn't.
Oh, he's the engineer for the applicant. And they're building houses on Robinson Road, which is a private road. They're, um, they're looking for an extension, because they're, they're building the houses and it's not done yet. I don't think it's ever gonna be a public road, it's always gonna be a private. Either way, they need an extension for the south division.
You would need the chair to declare that this is unforeseen item, which I think it is.
I have the email sent to him.
It is, uh, it is definitely unforeseen item. Um, the project's already been approved, so it isn't something of scope, this is more of extending a project that just hasn't been completed. Uh, and therefore, I don't see any issue with, uh, with having discussion on it. Um, once again, this is not something before the public, this is something that is, uh, we're just extending an existing product, project, uh, knowing, uh, uh, you know, what's been done and what's transpiring and, and I think we'd have a problem extending this particular project. Anybody have any other discussion, community?
I got no problem extending it. But I've been writing though. Yes, I think due to the engineer not being, yeah, available, I think that's what the problem was.
Yeah.
And, um, hope maybe that's something that Gil can put together.
I can have the chair sign it, yes. We talked. Yeah, we're gonna need, we'll need a motion.
That's what we thought.
Once again, is there any questions of what we're doing? Um, we're extending an existing project we approved several years ago. Uh, it's private road projects.
Two years, Bill?
Uh, what?
Two years?
Two years, yeah.
Yes, March, two years ago.
You're voting?
Oh, I need a motion.
I'll make a.
Motion to extend.
Extend this project for Robinson Road for two years.
Second.
Today.
What, two, two years from today?
Two years from today.
And who seconded?
All those in favor?
All right, I'm going to understand this.
Yeah, we have Damon Stings. We have one last item. Did he respond or?
He did not.
But I mean, I don't think there's anything we can do to that, then, right? She want to, want to, want to, want to just continue until the next one, just to, just to make sure, just in case.
Is this 35 Hastings?
Yeah.
I mean, if they're not here, they haven't responded, you can't hear evidence, so.
No.
No, but I'm saying, should it be, should it be continued to the next meeting or after the, after the annual? Because there's nothing we can do.
I had a discussion with.
I think there's some confusion on, on the continuance. That's why.
Okay, I, I, all I can tell you is I talked to John Nenar last week, and he wanted to continue it till the first meeting after town meeting.
Okay.
That sounds, that sounds logical.
May 15.
May 50.
All right, let's do continuance until then.
Motion to continue the public hearing for 35, 37 Hastings Street to May 15th, 6 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
That other motion?
One more motion.
Motion would join.
The most important one.
Second. Hi.
All right, good job.